I'd like to call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Costa. Mr. Bono.
Here.
Mr. Fiocchi.
Here.
Mr. Medio. Mr. Rivera.
Here.
Mr. Sabrana.
Present.
Mr. Silva.
Here.
Mr. Holmes.
Here.
Mrs. Kottaspadi.
Present. In compliance with the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law, commonly referred to as the Sunshine Law, the Vinland Board of Education has caused notice in posting of this meeting to be set to the following: Announcing time, place, agenda, etc., The Daily Journal, SNJ Today, The Press of Atlantic City, Vista Bueno, The Clerk for the City of Vinland, and the Administrative Office Public Bulletin Board. Would everybody please rise for the flag salute? Would our Dominic Pillar and Memorial Middle School students come on up? Mr. Mustarel, is there a resolution for executive session?
Yes, there is. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education and the City of Vinland School District will convene in an executive session for the following reasons as outlined in NJSA 10:4-12. Discussion is about any matter involving a proposed lease or acquisition of real property and any matters falling within the attorney-client privilege to the extent confidentiality is required in order for the attorney to exercise her ethical duties as a lawyer.
Before I call for a motion, I want to say happy birthday.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Happy birthday, Scott.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bono?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Kottaspadi?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Yano, do we have any special presentations this evening?
Yes, we do. I will go down to the podium with Mrs. Kottaspadi so we can do a nice presentation to recognize our district employees who have served in the military. In honor of Veterans Day, every year we'd like to recognize a few of our employees who have served. This evening, we have three names we would like to announce. So if they are here, we would like you to come up so you can receive a certificate. Serving at VHS South Building, John Procopio, who is one of our teachers, served in the U.S. Navy for four years. John, I believe, cannot join us this evening, but let's hear it for John and recognition of his service. Also at Vonin High School, we have Aiden Spatafiori, who is working, he's a, was a student of ours in the National Guard, and he's been serving for less than one year. Is Aiden here with us this evening? We thought he was going to be able to come out tonight. Is Aiden here? No? Okay, well, let's hear for Aiden, serving in the National Guard. From Petway School, Florence Spavak, who's one of our nurses, served in the Army, 21 years of service. Is Florence here with us this evening? Okay. We will make sure we get the certificates to all of our folks that we wanted to recognize tonight. And it's always a great honor to be able to work with our colleagues who have served our country. So thank you again. Let's hear it one more time for our colleagues. This evening, we have a special presentation with the one and only Mr. Sylvester Siffalaleo, our Director Athletics. Where is Mr. or Coach Schiff, as he's known? Come on down, Coach. Coach Schiff will be presenting the Fall Sports Wrap-Up.
Good evening. Thank you to the Board of Education and Central Administration for having athletics here tonight. Tonight's all about our athletes and our coaches and what they accomplished this fall, but I wanted to share a couple of facts that you may not know. Vinland Athletics offers seven athletic programs during the fall season, consisting of 16 teams at the varsity, junior varsity, freshman, and middle school levels. And we're proud to say that we had 472 students participate in the fall season alone. All sports, all teams participate in the Cape Atlantic League Group Four, except for football, which is in the West Jersey Football League Freedom Division of Group Five. One of the things that we're most proud of is our social media presence on Facebook, Instagram, and X. And if you can see on the presentation, it's just a screenshot of one of our videos of one of our senior football players, Avian Diaz. A video of one of his highlight catches has over 19,000 views on our Vinland Athletics Instagram page. Okay, before we get up to the teams, I spoke with most of the coaches and the players while they were enjoying their coffee. I'm sorry, their iced tea and cookies. But as we called the teams up, our coaches are going to present some facts about this season. And I asked the players, the senior athletes, just to come up front so the Board of Ed and the community can see you. Before I announce this first team, it's on the slide, but I know Coach Paul Myers won't mention it. Even though it's on the slide, he's actually one of three finalists for South Jersey Boy Soccer Coach of the Year, as chosen by his peers. I have it on the slide, but I know he'd skip over it. But Coach Myers... Coach Myers is going to share some facts about his season. I ask if he has any senior athletes here, if you could come up in front of the stage and be recognized by the community and the board members. Boys, right in front, right in front, please, boys. Number one, I appreciate our senior boys coming tonight. We have a handful that either work a part-time job. They still play soccer outside of Vinland High School Soccer, so they have a practice or an event tonight. And one is actually a doctor's appointment. That's hoping to make it here in the next couple of minutes. But we'll make sure to say his name and give him the honor as well. Vinland Boy Soccer had a very, very rewarding season. We learned and grew from every challenge, and we embraced those challenges. Our main goal was to earn a spot in the NJSIAA Group Four Playoffs, and we met that goal. From there, we took King's Way to double overtime, an amazing game. Mr. DeBois and Mr. Yano and Coach Schiff were there. It was one of our best games of the season, you know. Didn't fall our way in the end, but to represent the school district and play in that type of event was a special thing for our, for our boys. We have a few special honors today. We had two amazing captains this season, Noah Sarnoff and Anthony Calabrese, who both earned All-Star recognition. Noah Sarnoff was named First Team Cape Atlantic League. Anthony Calabrese was named Honorable Mention. From there, a First Team All-Star is able to potentially get South Jersey. And Noah Sarnoff did earn that. Noah Sarnoff was named First Team All-South Jersey, and he will represent Vinland High School in the South Jersey All-Star Game at Rutgers Camden on Tuesday, November 26th at 8:00 p.m. So that'll be a special event if anybody wants to come out and support Noah at Rutgers University in Camden Tuesday, November 26th at 8:00 p.m. And we'll be sure to advertise that to everybody. During this season, I had great support from my assistant coaches, Santiago Garzon, Ryan Campbell, Jim Hague, and support from Corey Adamanis. Our assistant coaches showed up ready to go every day, ensuring these seniors had a special year, which included victories over Millville, two amazing four-game winning streaks. And we play in the toughest division in the Cape Atlantic League, and we had a victory against each team in our league, you know, which led to that overtime battle in the playoffs. So we're extremely proud of these seniors, who we'd like to, you know, take a moment to honor each of them. First, here, yes, please, one of our defensive players, Matthew Wheeler. Certainly, certainly. Thank you. One of our midfield players, also played striker, Austin Donato. Played a variety of positions for us, some striker, some mid, could play a little bit of defense, Everett Crunk. Had a key goal in our win against Camden Tech, Roman Borovat. Thank you, Roman. One of our team captains was named Honorable Mention, All-Star, Anthony Calabrese. What a special player. I'm actually going to go to his game on Sunday. We nicked him the stallion. One of our hardest workers, Hayden Burtonazi. Thank you to our Vinland High School seniors, an amazing season. As I said, a few weren't able to make it today, but we're truly proud of these boys. Thank you, guys. And the athletes on each team are receiving certificates from Mr. Yano and the Board of Education, so thank you. Next up, Coach Leslie Garten and the Girl Soccer Team.
Good evening. I would like to present to you this year's seniors for Vinland Girls Soccer. We consist of about 30 players through JV and varsity. This year's, our record is eight, nine, and two, which, being honest, isn't our best record. But it's not anywhere indicative of the team that we had. This is the best group of girls, I think, that I've ever coached. We did qualify for the playoffs this year, only losing to the number-one seed 1-0. It was a phenomenal game that our girls should have walked away, walked away with. I have three amazing captains this year, which I'll announce in a few moments. Again, probably one of the best set of leaders I've ever had, including the other seniors not being captains, who are also outstanding leaders. First player achievement I have is Amanda Namath with 17 goals, which is the most in a single season since 2010. She also earned Cape Atlantic League Honorable Mention. And then we have Ashlyn Newton. She's our Cape Atlantic League First Team Centerback. First in line, I have Nia Murdis. She is one of our defenders. We have Ashlyn Newton, who is our centerback, First Team Cape Atlantic. We have Jalissa Cortez, who's one of our senior captains. We have Amanda Namath, who is a second-year captain, Cape Atlantic Honorable Mention. We have another senior captain, Angela Koskabask, who I would be remiss without mentioning that she had 15 goals this season, was also outstanding for our offense. And then I will tell you, we have the best, sorry for your other teams, the best manager that there is to have. She was the jack-of-all-trades from taking stats to running the scoreboard for us at home games, which was amazing, Cashel Azorio. Thank you very much.
Okay, to present our boys' cross-country team, head coach Elliot DeShields.
Good evening, everyone. It's been an honor to be here this evening. Most of you know me for like 20-something years coaching football. And when I made that switch over to cross-country, it was, let me tell you something, it was definitely a joy for sure. We started off, for the first time, we started off with having just barely be able to make a full team with about seven to 10 kids. And now we've grown through the years. We have over 25 kids out this year for our program, which was a great feat in itself. Our record this year was six and four, since '63, we're six and four this year. So we had a winning season. We were second in the Cumberland County Championships this year. We actually won it in 2023, lost a few players, but that's okay. We'll get it back next year again. And we finished third out of 15 teams at the Salsi- Excuse me, Invitational at Brandywine Park in Delaware this year. So guys had a very fine day also out there. I actually had three, well, we had four seniors out of those 25 men that we have. We only have four seniors, well, five seniors actually, one's missing. So we have a very large team coming back. So like I said, I'm very excited to see what we do again next year. I had, actually, I had three of my track athletes follow me over, and they just wanted to come, they wanted to come out and say, "Coach, I want to get better for spring track this year." So they wanted to follow me over to cross-country, which I greatly appreciated. And all three of those gentlemen right there, which I'm going to name in a second, they actually improved the time by over two minutes. So they really, they really worked. And I appreciate them coming out and supporting and helping our team to get stronger this year. And I'll talk about the last one in there in a second. First of all, we have, here with us tonight, we have Zayon Evans-Rosa. Come on over, Zayon. Next senior is Jamon Bennett. Elijah Milburn. Again, this is their first year out, and they're first varsity letter winners this year. My last senior over there, cannot talk enough about this young man, he's a four-year varsity letter winner. He was with me from, from the start, and I remember him being, I'm looking at him this way, and now I gotta look at him this way. Got really growing up on me, and like I said, just always did a fantastic job. Again, ran varsity his freshman year all the way through his senior year, and he had a top time in a cross-country this year of 17:45 for the 3.1, for the 5K or 3.1 miles. And I'm going to miss him. He was my team captain, and like I said, he always gave his best effort out there. I'm really going to miss him. In fact, he was Honorable Mention, Cape Atlantic League Honorable Mention this year for our team, and that's our senior captain Seth Soupy. So as I said before, the future looks bright. I can't wait to get started again for next year. Well, we got to go through indoor track and everything. We're going to do that too. But you know that, Doc. But again, just excited to see what happens in the near future. Like I said, our seasons are looking very bright, and I just appreciate the opportunity to be able to coach these fine young men. I would like to thank, again, our athletic director, Mr. Siffalaleo, for, you know, giving us the time to come out and recognize these kids. Thank you so much. Thank you, Board, for everything that you do for us. Thank you so much. Thank you, Superintendent Schools, Assistant Superintendent Schools, just everyone, especially our coaches, the help coach. And I want to send a last shout-out, I'm sorry, to our parents. Man, we have some wonderful parents out there. They gave the pasta parties for these kids this year. And let us thank you, the Browns, and all the parents out there. Thank you so much. Next year, don't let me get on the mic because I do not know how to stop. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, next up, sadly, in his final season, as his teaching and coaching career is winding down, girls' cross-country coach, Mr. Joel Hyder.
Good evening. Not good at this, as you can tell. I had the privilege and honor of coaching a tremendous team, and I had some great seniors to help lead the way. I'd like to speak a little bit about each one of them, and then I will go over our team accomplishments at the end, what we've accomplished this year, as we've set some new goals and heights for Vinland Cross Country. First, our seniors. First up, Kylie Black. Kylie, come on up. She's our two-year varsity letter winner, team captain, First Team All-Conference, which with the college, very difficult to achieve, and she's the individual county champion. Next up, Gabby Brown. Gabby is a team captain, two-year varsity letter winner, honorable mention Cape Atlantic League, and she placed 10th at South Jersey Sectionals in Group Four, which was an automatic qualifier. And in Group Four, that is the toughest group in cross-country, South Jersey Group Four. So, nice job, Gabby. Next up, Jazira Spencer. Two-year varsity letter winner, and she placed 7th at the Cumberland County Championships, and she was instrumental in helping us achieve our goal at Sectionals. Next up, this young lady had a big responsibility as she was in charge in helping us develop our young runners. When they go out in running groups, I knew I could take, consult, knowing that my young runners were going to get good guidance and get the workout done that they needed. runners were going to get good guidance and get the workout done that they needed, and that's Ms. Cassidy Consolo. Cassidy's a four-year varsity letter winner. Next up is Manroop Cowan. Manroop is also in charge of our young runners, taking them under her wing and guiding them throughout the season. She is a team captain and four-year varsity letter winner. And like Ms. Garten said, without our managers, none of us coaches would be up here tonight because they take care of us and our athletes. Most of you know we've had some really warm weather, and in cross-country, it's very, very important that you have good people at the finish line to make sure our athletes are taken care of. And I get a lot of compliments from other coaches throughout our conference, how well we take care of our athletes, and that is because of our managers. And our one manager that's here tonight is Ms. Danica Feaster. Danica is in charge of our scoring, ice towels, the little chips that the girls have to wear on their shoes, oh, by the way, if you lose one, it's fifty dollars, just so you know. Don't worry, Coach Schiff, no fines this year. And Aaron Shipman was also her co-part on the varsity manager. This time, I'd like to bring up the rest of my state team. These young ladies, along with your three seniors, did the following. Senior members of the varsity team included Kylie Black, Gabby Brown, Jazira Spencer, along with junior Marissa Strickland, sophomore Olivia Masucci, sophomore Gianna Copafari, sophomore Audrey Harrell, along with first alternate Blanche Clisma. This is what we achieved this year. We were team champions at the Sausaline Invitational on an extreme hilly course in Delaware against the Pennsylvania schools. We led the team to its third consecutive county title. We had fourth place at the Cal Champions. The three teams in front of us all made meet the champions in cross-country last year, which is the culmination of all the events that cross-country runners go for. We placed fifth at the South Jersey Group Four Sectional and had the automatic qualifications to Group Four in the state. And again, South Jersey Group Four is the toughest group to get out of. We won by three points, which is one runner. And we placed thirteenth at State Group Four. We were ranked twentieth going into the race, and we finished thirteenth. The team is currently ranked thirteenth in South Jersey Cross Country. Ladies and gentlemen, your cross-country team in 2024. And again, we all know that it takes everyone to develop a program and run a program, all of us, as coaches know this, our parents are very instrumental. But as a head coach, I would not be anywhere without my trusted assistants, Ms. Heather Fiori, Mr. Tony Mancini, who volunteered this year, and of coach I rely very heavily on, Mr. Elliot DeShields.
Good evening. Our head coach, Kate Cronk, couldn't be here tonight, so I'm standing in for her. I am the assistant. This year, we had thirty-six players between the varsity and JV squad. We also have a great middle school program run by Debo Kane, who is one of our middle school teachers in Vineland. Overall this year, our record was nine and nine, which was a pretty good record. In our division, we were eight and two, which is a really good record for our division. We were eighth, we had an eighth-place finish out of seventeen teams in the Cape Atlantic League. And we were second in the Cape Atlantic League United Division, and then eight out of seventeen teams in the Cape Atlantic League. For our player honors, we have our goalie, Arizdelci Acevedo. She was Cape Atlantic League Honorable Mention, and she had seventy-eight saves this year. So, good job, Arizdelci. I'm going to skip over the next one, I'll come back to her because she's not a senior. Olivia Vertoli, she also was named Cape Atlantic League First Team All-Star, and Olivia had eight goals and one assist this season. And then our awesome manager, because we also had the best manager, a lot of, a lot of teams apparently did, Alan Bateta, and he is the one that brought up the stats for me, that's why he's so awesome. So Alan. And we will miss him very much. And then Georgina Challow, who is second year in a row, for the second year in a row, she is First Team Cape Atlantic League First Team All-Star. And she will also be representing Vineland in the All-Star South Jersey game at Clearview High School, November twenty-fifth. She is also a third-year captain for our team. And Georgina had eight goals and eight assists. And then the other player that I do want to make mention is Sydney Cronk. She is a sophomore, but she was also chosen as a First Team Cape Atlantic League First Team All-Star, and Sydney, as a sophomore, had seventeen goals and eight assists this year. So she is, we're looking forward to great things from her, and she was also one of
Unfortunately, our girls' tennis team had a prior engagement scheduled for tonight, but their head coach is Vince Luciano. They have thirty-four players on the team. Again, they made a deep run into the Group Four playoffs, many individual achievements, highlighted by, we won the Cumberland County Tournament for the third consecutive year. We hosted that at Vineland High School. We also host the Cape Atlantic League Tournament for the girls in the fall, and the Cape Atlantic League Tournament for the boys in the spring. They are both three-day, three-day events that we proudly host at VHS. Coach Luciano and his girls are very proud of their year-round community service.
Hello, my name is Greta Broom, and I'm the head coach for high school varsity cheer team, and I have my support person, Deb Quinn. My assistant coach is currently at the high school right now doing our winter cheer tryouts, and he normally speaks for me because I can't, I hate public speaking. All right, so first, I want to thank the Board, the athletic director and staff, as well as our amazing parents, for their support with the cheer program. Without you, we couldn't do anything that we attempt to do and accomplish. So, thank you very much. I also want to thank my assistant coach, Carlos, for all his dedication and hard work, and our first-year volunteer coach, Lauren Bell, for bringing a little pizzazz from North Jersey. She did fit in very well with us. The highlights for me as a coach are, for this year, are the stunt clinic that we attended at Barnegat High School. It was the first time the team had attended camp in almost ten years, I'm told. The team was very nervous with a lot of new girls on the team, but they held their own against teams who have been attending the camp for years. We were very proud of them. Another highlight for me is also watching them learn and perfect their pep rally performance. They did an amazing job. Right now, I have my four captains right now, and Michaela, come up, sweetie. Four captains. All four of them are three-year varsity athletes, Jaleah Mays and Aubrey Alquist. They are my captains of choreography and stunting. Christine Lamb and Tamara Button, who could not be here, are also captains. They organize our fundraising and team building. And Ms. Boss Lady, Michaela Giuliani, I've had her for four years. She is a jack-of-all-trades and the organizer of the group. As a group, the captains, they all work together to make sure that the team stays positive and help the team advance in higher-level stunts. Rachel Gonzalez, I've had her for four years as well. She's always done what was asked of her. Drives me a little bit crazy, but I love her dearly. And she had great sportmanship, sportsmanship. Seniors who could not be here tonight due to prior commitments or again, winter cheer tryouts are Tamara Button, Julian Rodriguez, Jolynn King, and Malaya Palmer. I asked the girls tonight, last minute, what was the highlight of the year for them? What was the best part of the year for them? And they said to me, this year, the team felt more like a family. And as coaches, Carlos and I couldn't be more proud of that. That's all.
First and foremost... Fresh, fresh, my brother. Got to keep it fresh. First and foremost, I'd like to thank everyone in attendance tonight for making it out to this festive occasion to honor our seniors. All the seniors in attendance, they deserve it. Thank you, Board, for allowing this to happen. Special thanks to Coach Schifalaleo for all his hard work and dedication to the student body at VHS. Also, Mrs. Quinn, for our school principal at VHS, she's done an excellent job thus far. As far as the football team is concerned, these gentlemen here are seniors, my seniors, the coaching staff seniors, we're going to really miss these guys, man. They're, they're great, great kids, great student athletes, leaders in the classroom, leaders on the field, and we have a, we have a tight bond with these kids. They're great kids. Great kids, Donnie. So the football team, we are five and four currently, okay? Participants in all three levels, we have a total of eighty-nine. Just got word this past Friday that our First Team guys for the West Jersey Football League Freedom Division are as follows. Xavion Diaz, our wide receiver, number one. Donnie St. Jean got honors for defensive lineman, all right, number fifty-two, also named Cape Atlantic League Fall Scholar Athlete. Okay, so, Donnie, you, you earned that, Donnie. You really did. Saquon Anderson, our D-back, number five, and Noah Cruz, our linebacker, number eight. Honorable mentions go as follows. Mark Muterson, okay, and Jose Phibas, who's also being honored at the Touchdown Club of Southern New Jersey for his Scholar Athletic Award, so I'm very proud of you as well. Okay, great job. These gen, thank you. These gentlemen aren't done though, we have our, our rival next door that we have to go ahead and catch up with, have a nice little reunion with. So on November twenty-eighth, make sure you come out in droves over to Gaton to see these guys go ahead and put on a show, because I know they will, I know they are. I'm very proud of these kids. Introducing first, Mark Muterson. Second, Mason Afanador. Third, Charles Clark. Donnie St. Jean. And lastly, Nalil Span. Again, thank you guys all, and again, gentlemen, you're going to be missed very sorely. I mean, the coaching staff love you guys, all right? So keep up the great work and keep being productive gentlemen in society, man, and we know you will.
Okay, and we just have a winner preview slide with all the sports we offer during the winter season. Winter is coming, yeah. But I really quickly, there's so many people that make these events happen, and I know as a, as a fan, you know, I'll show up to a game sometime and you think it just magically happens. But our athletic trainers, Dave and Dara, make sure everybody's safe and hydrated. The transportation department, led by J-
The transportation department, led by Jan Jimenez, make sure we get where we need to be. Security provides us with a safe environment. And maybe more so this season than ever, Joe Pettit and Mike Ott for making our fields playable. We're dealing with the worst drought since they started keeping record in the 1800s, I just read today. So our fields weren't always the prettiest, but they were playable for our kids. And just about every team played the maximum number of games this fall season. And of course, social media, I always talk about our social media everywhere I go, that's thanks to Ms. Ashley Sale. In the winter, we'll have our boys and girls swim, wrestling, girls' basketball, boys' basketball, basketball, indoor track, and winter cheer, and we invite you all to come out and see as many games as you can. So thank you all. So we'd now like to invite Mr. Bono to present a gift to the VHS Historical Society.
Thank you. Superintendent, thank you for allowing me this evening on behalf of one of East Valen's To follow up with Coach Guzman, just to want to discuss a little bit about the Thanksgiving Day rivalry. The Thanksgiving Day rivalry between VHS and Millville became, began in 1893. It is one of the oldest and longest-running rivalries in our country. The current record is Valen 67, Millville 66, with 19 ties. Pretty close, boys. Let's bring it home this year, okay? This will be our 153rd meeting this Thanksgiving Day here at Gattone Stadium. This 1934 game ball was given to me by Amanda and Joey Talati from East Valen. This 90-year-old pigskin came out of Margaret Ritchie's house after she passed away at the age of 100 years old. Margaret Ritchie was a local artist, and actually, several of her paintings can be seen hanging on the walls at my establishment, Eastland. Margaret was a Pelugi, a family member to the Talati family, and sister of VHS's 1934 football team's captain, Mr. Bud Buddy Pelugi. When she passed, Joey's mom and his wife, Amanda, went to help clean out Margaret's house, and that's when they found this gem. Amanda thought to give it to me because of my involvement with Valen Public Schools, excuse me. The family wanted me to ensure that this little piece of history remained in Valen High School where it belongs. A brief history lesson on the football game. Thanksgiving Day, 1934. Valen won 13 to Millville 7. In one of the most exciting games in Cumberland County Football Championship Series, Valen High rallied in the last period to defeat Millville at Gattone Stadium 13 to 7. More than 5,000 spectators saw Coach Nick Catarina's 11 bringing the county title to Valen for the seventh successive time after a close battle was waged between the two schools. The expected power of the winning 11 was shown only in the first period. After that, it was practically an even battle, with both teams playing the hardest kind of football. The winning touchdown was scored in the last quarter when Valen finally succeeded in breaking a 7-7 tie. A perfect 20-yard pass tossed over right end by Solo Shapiro was caught by George Bellamy just as he crossed the goal line. Valen's other touchdown was made in the first period when Captain Buddy Pelugi crashed through the line from the 3-yard stripe to climax an 80-yard drive down the field. Thomas kicked the extra point, his 12th of the season. Millville's lone score came in the third quarter when Lindy Zimmerman picked up a block punt and ran 19 yards around left end to the goal line. Johnny Schwegel place-kicked the extra point. This is from the Valen Daily Journal, 1930, excuse me, November 30th, 1934. So now I'd like to call up Dr. McCann and Class President, Class President of the VHS Extoros Society, Michaelata Giuliani, so I can present this 19-year-old piece of history. Excuse me. 90-year-old football. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, guys. It is my honor and privilege on behalf of the Pelugi, Ritchie, and Talati families that I present this piece of Valen history to our VHS Athletics Hall of Fame. Thank you.
And just out of curiosity, can I have anyone that participated in the Turkey Day Classic, whether on the field playing or coaching, please stand up to be recognized? Mr. Gallo?
Thank you, guys.
Okay. We have one more special presentation. Again, thank you, Coach Schiff. Well done. Thank you to all of our teams, coaches, representatives, for a wonderful presentation spotlighting our student athletes. At this time, I would like to invite Mrs. Deena Rodolfo, Supervisor for Pupil Services, who will present the 2023-2024 Assessment Results.
I, every November, I have to report the state assessments results from last year per state regs. So I am here. You guys all have this presentation. It is very lengthy. I have to use the state template. There are certain things that are required that I have to put in there per the state. I am not going to go over every piece of data that's in there. It will take, it would take hours, and it's, I'm going to go briefly go over what it means and what you're looking at, and this way, you can go over it when you would like. I'm going to touch on some high points, and then we will, if you have any questions, you can ask me either later today, or you can send me an email. So throughout the presentation, what you're going to be looking at is comparisons of 2023 scores, 2024 scores, in comparison to basically how we did. So there are five different levels, 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. Level 1, not yet meeting. Level 2, partially. Level 3, approaching. And where we want to be is levels 4 and 5. So that is essentially meeting or exceeding. So if you look all the way to the end, I color-coded it, I'm very visual, I need to see it. So what we want is, although it looks like in that first row there changes in level 1, 2, and 3, we want to lose people from there. We want them to bump up to levels 4 and 5. So when we see the negative there, that means that we are pushing, our students are learning, and they're moving out of that lower, the 1, 2, 3 groups into the 4 and 5, where they're meeting or exceeding expectations. So that's what you're going to be seeing throughout the slots, throughout this presentation. It's like 40, 40, 40 slides long. So as you can see, we, you know, as a district, we are making growth in certain areas, and the areas that we are not making growth, it's, we, those are the areas that we are going to be focusing on. So again, what you're looking at here, this would be our mathematics. This is what we're looking at. And just to note, so when you look down at our mathematics, and when you're looking at mathematics and you're looking at our scores, so Algebra 1 is the area that we most test, that is our highly tested, because we only test in ninth grade. So usually, in ninth grade, that is Algebra 1. We do not test in 10th grade or 11th grade. So if you're in ninth grade and you're taking geometry, that means that you probably took Algebra 1 in eighth grade. Or there's a high possibility that if you were in our formerly AMSA, in our AMSA program or one of those additional programs, you may have taken both Algebra 1 and geometry. So when you're looking at those geometry, the data for geometry and the data for Algebra 2, it's a very small population of students. I think we only had, I believe it was 12 students that took Algebra 2, because we only had about 12 students in ninth grade in Algebra 2 at the time. So it's a very small population of students. And this is science. These are our science scores. Again, it's the same type of thing. I'm not going to go over every slide. What I also had to do is just compare the different levels and where we did in levels 1, 2, and 3 from year to year, and this is in comparison to what the state, how the state did overall. So there are different slides that show essentially how we did in comparison to the state, as well as to how we did amongst us. Same thing, same thing with math. And as you can see, we did, in looking at our mathematics, we have made growth. And there is our, our science as well. These are the number of students that participated in testing. We have to show them how many students participated and what our difference was from year to year. Same thing with mathematics. Same thing with science. And here is, again, looking at the district scores and the state scores for each level and how we did. I'm going to skip through. This is the same thing. So this is kind of what I briefly mentioned, just to keep in mind that our Grade A, Grade A8 data is also skewed as well. So when you're looking at our Math 8 scores, many of our higher achieving math students are taking Algebra 1, so they're not included in the Math 8, so they're taking a different test because they are in Algebra 1. So our Grade A8 data is excluding some of those students. And again, this is more comparison of our levels 1 and 2 in comparison to the state. And this is math. And this is science. So what I also have to do, when, what the state also asks that I do, is to identify how each of our schools did. So I don't like to put the school's data out there. What I do is I label them, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, and I know who they are, but it's not out there. And then that is how, how they did. So essentially, if you look at the end, it wants to know the percentage of students in levels 4 and 5, and then the comparison to where we are now. So it basically, if you see a green, that means that they rose from the previous year. If you see a red, it means they may have dropped a little bit from the previous year. And as you can see, we have, the majority for ELA has shown some growth. And those that didn't, it was minimal loss. This is our Grade 4 percentages for ELA. Same type of thing, it's just showing you where we, where we compared to the previous year by school. Same thing, this is math via school. And again, Grade 4 math via school. And this would be science. And, ow, that was my hip. And these are our science, again, the difference in scores. So I also had to take two specific schools and compare them. They want to see that comparison. So that's what we did here. We compared a specific elementary school and a middle school to the state, and that's what you're looking at here. It looks at 2023, how they did in 2023, and how they did this year in comparison to the state. And the same thing with, I had to also do it for ELA. And this is level 5. And I had to also do it for mathematics. So this is one for mathematics, comparing a different elementary school and a different middle school in mathematics for, and this also includes the high school with the algebra scores and the geometry scores. Again, I'm not going to go over all of every little thing. So the other thing that I have to include is our subgroup data. So this essentially shows you the, our population of students are by ethnicity and how they scored. So it'll show you, there's a, you know, whether they met, exceeded, what they, how they did. This is also further, it further breaks it down into students with disability, our ML students, or other, like our homeless, our economically disadvantaged students. And this is something that I throw in every year, just to show where we're at as far as our graduation rate. If my mathing was done correct, so when I got the state results, we were, I think we were about 84%, and then I had to do about 20 appeals, which were all accepted. Appeal process is just, sometimes kids are put in the wrong cohort, and so I have to do appeals to the state. So it looks like this year, we will be, for last year, we will be at 86.1%, which, as you can see, has been the highest that we've ever been. So, which I'm really pleased with that. I'm pushing for 90 next year, so that's my goal. Ms. Yano promised me a party. Yeah. Notable achievements, middle school Algebra 1 has multiple standards for exceeding the state average. Intervention strategy, these are things that we are doing as a district. We have implemented new MTSS and INRS process to assist teachers with providing intervention and support. All teachers have been trained, all of our staff have been trained, our counselors, administrators have all been trained. Implementation of a differentiated instruction block for grades K to 5, focused on building students' foundational literacy skills. The K to 5 curriculum to utilize a structured literacy approach to support all students. I-ready for grades 6 to 8 in ELA in math. Intervention support in their mascot period. Alex for grade 6 to 12 math. Adaptive learning tool to help address individual student knowledge gaps. And then the Close Reading Course for grade 9, in addition to their core ELA course. And I think that is it. So that is the end. I tried to make it quick. Like I said, there's a lot of data in there. Feel free to look at it, peruse it in your free time, and then if you have any questions, you could always feel free to email me. Thank you.
Seeing none. Are there any questions or comments on the October 2nd combined meeting minutes, October 2nd executive session minutes, October 15th special meeting, board retreat minutes? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bono? Yes. Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Goddard's body?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Committee reports. Do I have committee reports? Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes, good evening. The Finance Committee met Tuesday, November 12th, at 8:00 a.m. via Google Meet. In attendance was Mr. Mustaral, Ms. Yano, Mr. Holmes, Mr. Silva, Mr. Rivera, and myself. Following topics were discussed. Grants and aids, we are not selected for the COPS Violence Prevention Grant. Submitted NSLP grant for food service kitchen equipment. Renewal of shared service agreement with the city for car wash. New contracts, transportation jointure with Gloucester County Public School District and Buena Regional School District. RFPs, we rejected the proposal for the Wallace Greenhouse. Facilities, change order for Bar C partial roof replacement, change order for VH North Tanner partial roof replacement. Vine High School North pool incident. Vehicles listed on GovDeals, transportation van camera investment. And lastly, the '25-'26 budget, we have started the discussion for that. Thank you.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes, thank you. I'm pleased to report that at long last, our project to replace our outdated and cumbersome broadcast TV vehicle is complete. COVID, manufacturing, and later, supply chain difficulties made this a torturously drawn-out process, but good things are worth waiting for. The van has been operating at full capacity for the fall sports season, with the actual production directed by Field Services Tech Doug Diola to the Public Information Office of Missia, Missouri. The van has recently been wrapped in full VHS colors, as you can see here. The most important-- in full VHS colors, as you can see here. The most important equipment that has been installed and quotes are being prepared for the final item still lacking, a replay controller, console, and a fourth last-generation digital video camera. At our meeting of October 15th, student engagement was discussed, especially the number of students on the TV crew and the role of the studio production classes. There are currently 12 active students on the broadcast crew, four from the studio program at VHS. The studio production teacher is working with the Communications Department to create a curriculum that will allow students to work in the van as part of the class, therefore preparing them for the actual world of work. Still on our agenda is the status of our two education and government channels on the Xfinity and Vario Sfios TV networks. There's much work to do in regard to restoring our access and sharing of content. Ms. Missouri is working with our Technology Department as this process moves forward. My personal thanks to everyone who served on the committee. Mrs. Cottisbody, Mr. Rivera, Mr. Bono, and also to the ultimate and limitless patience of Mr. Farinaccio and Mr. Salerno, who bore my nearly constant outreach about acquisition of the actual vehicle and the outfitting with great patience. It was a great job by Neil and his crew at Diversified Video Services. They built the platform from the original Ford chassis. This vehicle is the only one of its kind anywhere in the Northeast United States, according to the folks who did it. So we are really at the very cutting edge of TV broadcasting. And I'm very proud to have been associated with the program and also with the people that have done the work. Thank you.
Mr. Rivera? Mr. Holmes?
Curriculum instruction met November 11th. Present were Mrs. DiMarci, Superintendent Iano, Ms. Godlewski, Mr. Sabrana, Mr. Fiocchi, Mr. Bono, and myself. We discussed the following: Verizon Innovative Learning Schools Digital Promise Grant, the Financial Literacy Course Curriculum and Staffing, Ninth Grade Academy at VHS Tanner Building, High Impact Tutoring Grant Extension to June 30th, 2025, Dual Enrollment Grant, and the reapplication for maintenance, Special Education Waivers that were submitted. The Transportation Committee met on Tuesday, November 12th. Present were Superintendent Iano, Mr. Mustaral, Mr. Ramirez, Ms. Mason, Mr. Rivera, Mr. Bono, and myself. Driver recap, 143 drivers budgeted, 135 route packages, which is drivers needed, field positions 128, down 136 from last month. Drivers on leave, two. Drivers resignations and terminations, eight. Substitute drivers, 17. Drivers in training, four. The average absences in the AM for October 2024 were 17. As a comparison to 2023 in October, there were 18. And it's consistent for 2024 in October with 20 absences in the afternoon, which is the same for October 2023. Registrations, there were 16 open registrations as of November 11th. There were 76 registrations completed in October 2024. Jointures, Buna, ACVT, Gloucester County, and Willingboro. Upcoming jointure with Winslow Township Schools. They will compensate our district to transport two students. The co-op total year-to-date is 13. Three accidents in October. Accident on the 15th as well with minor injuries. Interviews for the garage inventory clerk position are being scheduled. Diesel mechanic started the 4th of November. Bus driver pay adjustment, compensation for 15-minute adjustment to driver packages with a Tier One PM route. In October, bus evacuations were completed. TSA SETA, Security Enhancement Through Assessment Drill conducted in October. TSA training following the drill. Pinkout Day to celebrate Risk Cancer Awareness Month. The district reported transported resident students submitted for certification on the 13th of this month. There are six buses from Monroe Township on Gov deals, four in service who are awaiting inspection and registration. There are two new Kia vans. One is in service. One is awaiting inspection and registration. General information, transportation considerations for out-of-district organizations, and $17,000 has been invested into the placement of cameras into all vans that transport students. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a public meeting report by our sports solicitor?
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Ms. Giuliani, our senior class president, do you have a?
Good evening. My name is Michaela Giuliani, and I'm the senior class president at Vinland High School. Vinland High School has continued its busy schedule. Shortly after the last meeting, we had our week-long celebration for homecoming. Our spirit days and pep rallies were a hit, and the school was buzzing with talk about them. Our homecoming parade was also a success. And while the class of 2025 did not win, ending our streak since the parade started back from COVID, we are proud of the junior class for their float and for their victory. At halftime, Zaria Gold was crowned Miss Monogram, and the rest of her court, in order, Alessandra Parent, Kylie Haig, Tamara Bunton, and Dulce Flores were honored by her side. Miss Monogram has been a tradition at Vinland High School for years. It is similar to Homecoming Court, but is meant to recognize commitment to VHS athletics and eloquence through an interview process in addition to the senior class popular vote. The day was full of wins when our football team beat Highland 25 to 0. The La La Land City of Stars-themed homecoming dance had overwhelmingly positive feedback with over 500 students in attendance. In particular, students were very excited about the extensive decorations that transformed our gym to a venue fit for celebration. The senior class planned the dance with help from the junior officers to set it up. Last Monday, we had a naming ceremony for our school honoring First Lieutenant Charles Chicky Aselta, who is now forever memorialized at the VHS South Campus. As always, the seniors have been busy. Over the break, senior students who drive to school were able to paint their parking stalls. This tradition happens nationwide. And beyond the positive impact on individuality and school spirit for students, it also helps reduce the carbon footprint of Vinland High School because it lessens the heat coming from the blacktop. Students at VHS have been hoping to do this for years, and we're very excited to be able to. Additionally, students are incredibly excited for Powderpuff, a junior-senior battle of the classes where students will swap roles. The girls of the classes will play each other in an intense game of flag football, while the junior and senior boys will cheer them on with cheers, stunts, jumps, and a halftime dance. I personally am one of the coaches for the boys, and having just come from practice, I have to say, they are doing amazing and are very quick learners. The game is only one week away on November 20th at Coteau Stadium. Kickoff will be at 6:00 PM. There is something students have been asking for. As of right now, the 3:00 PM activity buses only run on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. The activity buses are utilized by many students, especially those who are particularly involved. VHS has a ton of extracurricular activities, but all of them are currently scheduled for Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays because the buses are only available on those days. The problem with this becomes that students are cut off from participating in a variety of activities, even those that fall under the same discipline. For example, the academic team and NHS have to happen on the same day, which cuts off the academic team's practice time. VHS understands the logistic difficulties 3:00 PM buses, five days a week, brings up, but it would be incredibly beneficial to the student body as a whole, raising school spirits and continuing to make VHS's extracurriculars competitive and a strong representation of Vinland Public Schools. Thank you.
Ms. Deborah Quinn? She would be commenting on the Aselta naming?
Good evening. I'm Ms. Deborah Quinn. I am currently the interim principal over at Vinland High School. And how remarkable is that young lady? She's just amazing representing her class. First, I want to thank, or the reason I come up to talk tonight is just to thank the Board of Ed and Mr. Iano for the beautiful naming ceremony that we held last Monday for First Lieutenant Charles Chicky Aselta. We are the first school building to be named after a Vietnam veteran. I'm thankful to the Aselta family for their sacrifice and for allowing us a glimpse into the rich legacy that their family holds in our Vinland community. Special thanks to a few individuals, Rob Garcia, whoever sees our theater, and his stage crew, Gia Missouri for her coverage at the event and for live streaming it into the classrooms for us. We appreciate that. Many of our students were able to watch the whole ceremony, or if not, a portion of the ceremony. They got a rich history lesson that day. To, I'd like to thank Mr. Aselta, Mr. Nick Aselta, and his lovely wife Nancy for their displays and bringing of the artifacts and helping us to help organize the whole day. My partners in crime, the Vinland High School Administrative Team, Senior Class President, Ms. Michaela Giuliani, for being my co-EMC with me that day. Our cheerleading coach, Ms. Greta, and her cheerleaders, who escorted people into the building and greeted them out in the parking lot and walked them all the way into our staging area. To our marching band that performed out front as the guests arrived. They were amazing and did a great job under the direction of Mr. Justin Feliciano. Our select choir sub-director right now, he's a substitute teacher, Mr. Guadalupe, who helped our select choir singing the Alma Mater. And last but certainly not least, I really would like to thank this person, she's going to kill me for doing it, but Rosini Salerno, for keeping us all in line, on track, and organized with, from flowers to programs to countless phone calls and RSVPs and for countless, countless more items. I want to thank her for her hard work and dedication to making that day such a success. Thank you.
Tom Dietz?
Good evening, Board. I'm only here for my grandson. I drop him off or pick him up, and I've been, I happen to take him to school because the bus for the last two months, two and a half months, I understand the first week or second week of school, it's rough for the buses, which is understandable. But we're going on almost two and a half months now, and the bus picks him up like eight or 10, quarter after eight, and he's supposed to be in his first period at class at 8:00. So he's missing his first period for the last two months of school. And I made multiple calls to him and her, both supervisors of transportation, and they state that they're slow on bus drivers and all, but I don't think that's fair for the grandson to miss his first whole period of school due to the fact of they're slow on bus drivers. You know, he goes to the Vinland Charter School. So I don't know how we can resolve this problem here. And the second question I have for you, I guess, is he was involved in a bus accident over there on Robert and Ewan, and he went to the hospital. And my daughter Danielle here is getting multiple bills from the doctors, the EMS, and the hospital, and she doesn't want to run it through her car insurance because then her rates are going to go up. So if somebody can reach back out at me sometime next week, and we can discuss and figure out about the invoices for that accident, you know, but my main concern is just trying to get my grandson to school when school starts at 8:00, not 9:00 or 5:00 or 9:00 or something like that. And I'm not talking for the other 20 kids on the bus, but I mean, there's 20-some kids on the bus, and all 20 kids are late an hour for school. You know, I can understand the first week or second week until the bus drivers get the routes down and the drivers get it. But now we're going on a long period, and I had multiple, multiple conversations with both supervisors for the transportation, and my daughter Danielle did too. You know, so if somebody can reach back to my daughter, which you have her number on your computers, and maybe we can resolve this matter where Junior can get, Jesus Alvarez can get to school at 8:00 when school starts, not 9:00. And that's it, really. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Dietz, my office will reach out to your daughter concerning the bills that you're receiving.
Oh, thank you.
And we'll explain the procedure.
And one other thing real quick here. I don't think it was proper, not due to use, but I mean, she went for the police report, and all the juveniles, names, addresses, and numbers were written. It should have been blacked out. As juvenile, the adult, you don't mind, but she picked up in every student on the bus, their addresses, phone numbers, and names are written there. Everything should have been blacked out on that police report, you know, which she has. Thank you, Donna.
Sir, I'll just address that really quickly. This is Sandra Grace, Board Attorney. Just in regard to the police report, obviously, that's not the Board or the district disseminating that information. And, you know, and so the district will discuss privately with you anything as it relates to a car accident or pending litigation. Okay? Thank you, sir. We'll reach out. Sure, certainly. We'll be in touch with the parent or guardian of the student. Have a good night.
Is there anybody else that wishes to come up to the podium and speak? Seeing none?
Yes, requesting discussion and approval of Personnel Items 1.1 as noted on our agenda.
Questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bono?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottisbody? Motion carries.
I see Mrs. Toramina in our audience this evening. Just want to say congratulations and thank you for moving over to DePaulito School to serve as an AP, leaving preschool. So thank you again for your service. We're looking forward to your connections with Principal Morano. Requesting discussion and approval regarding procedures and operations, Items 2.1 through 2.7.
Questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bono?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottisbody?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Requesting discussion and approval regarding Finance Items 4.1 through 4.15.
Questions or comments? Seeing none. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Bono?
Yes, to all except for 4.18. I recuse myself. Excuse me? Oh, sorry. Yes to all. Sorry.
Thank you. Mr. Fiocchi?
I need to stay on 4.14. Sorry, I recuse myself on 4.14. Yes to everything else.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes to all. I recuse myself from 4.8.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes to all.
Mr. Silva?
Yes to all.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottisbody?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Requesting discussion and approval regarding Finance Items 4.15, oh, excuse me, 4.16 to 4.30 as noted on our agenda.
Questions, comments?
Yes, so if I might just comment on Item 4.17, shared service agreement between Cape May County Special Services School District and our district. This agreement is for itinerant services. It's my understanding that they're used on an as-needed basis. However, there's some concerns with the agreement as it stands right now. Cape May County District does not take into account amendments or revisions, even though they were suggested by our office. So I'll just bring your attention to some items. Some of them are financial, some of them are legal in nature in regard to indemnification and insurance. and insurance. On the first page, you'll see clause 3B to name a few items that are of concern. 3B indicates that the district's also going to be billed for preparation time, scheduling, consultation time. There's also a section on the fourth page of the agreement, which indicates that insurance coverage is going to solely apply to salaried staff members and not independent contractors that are utilized. There's also some issues with payment on Section 5, where if the district, if our district requests some services and they're not utilized, that our district, Vineland, is still going to be billed for those services. Again, it's my understanding that from a logistical procedure, this is in place of our staff members or our resources being utilized as well, and I think if there are any questions as to that, I think Ms. Cottaluski can provide some answers as to the actual logistics. But this was just as, you know, some information to take into consideration when making a decision on this agreement. Again, Cape May just does not want to, standard procedure for them to not amend this agreement, so it's either the agreement as written or just not contract for the services. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I have one. Is it possible to table this to further, a future meeting, just so we can get all the facts?
I'm not aware, what I'm aware of is that there may be a student who may need these services. Are those services being rendered by us currently? If you don't mind, I apologize.
Yeah, we should really work this out now.
Cape May County Special Services, along with all the other special services districts, offer itinerant services across the board. Not everybody offers the same service, but for example, if we had a speech therapist who got hurt and we needed to have a, we needed to have, find a substitute, we don't have substitutes on call, so we may utilize somebody from Cape May County Special Services to come in and provide therapy while our person is out on that extended leave. We do also have a couple students that are down, that are part of the Cape May County Special Services program as our students being sent out of district. They are due for speech and I think OT evaluations, so we would want to utilize the staff that's there. They know the children, they have the equipment there. If not, we would have to send our therapist down to Cape May to provide that assessment, which then cuts the services for our students that they were set, that they were scheduled to be seen that day. So, you know, I do understand that there are concerns, but it's used very rarely for itinerant services, but in the case of the students that are down there, it's a benefit for us that we don't lose our children, our in-district services, so one of our therapists or two of our therapists could travel down there, so.
How are they cost-wise versus a private company?
Typically, the special service districts provide a more reasonable cost for the district in some cases, and most of the time, they have people on staff, so they're easier to be able to utilize, so. Any other questions?
This is just pretty much an if situation, and that if we were to have, we take our students down there, they're using their stu, they're using their facilities, their teachers, and this way, we don't have to pull our teachers out from up here to send down there.
For students who need reevaluation services in those related service domains. All right? Any other questions?
Are there any local companies that provide these services?
There are local companies. We also have our own district therapist on hand, so, but what would happen if we had to send, first of all, if we had to send a therapist down to test a student who was already part of that school district, they're now missing the students that they're assigned to in our in-district programs to go down there and test somebody. As Mr. Mustarel indicated, we do have services, we do have companies that we have contracted with in the past, but typically, the special service district is more fiscally sound, reasonable for us than an out of, than a private contractor vendor, so.
Thank you, and thank you.
Any other kind, okay, thank you.
Roll call.
Mr. Bono?
Yes to all, but I've recused myself from 4.18.
Thank you. Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Patti?
Yes, and I recuse myself from 4.18.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Item for review, discussion, or adoption by Board members. Approval of the Board goals for 2024 through 2025 school year for the Violin Public Schools. Do we have any questions or comments? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bono?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Patti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Are there any questions or comments for the itemized bill pay list for September Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bono? Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Patti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
There are now American items, old business discussion regarding grant application. Cop School Violence, Cop School Violence Prevention Program in the amount of $546,300 for the purchase of a video stream manager for each of the district's 16 schools, software and monitoring for this equipment, approximately 84 additional security cameras, AI-based weapons detection system, and the hiring of a threat assessment consultant. The district has been notified that we will not be receiving this grant. New business. Board member comments. I'd like to start with Mr. Sabrana, because he has to be first this time. Mr. Rivera.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank the students from Pillar and Memorial for leading us in the flag salute. Congratulations to all the fall sports participants and great seasons that they had this year. Another reason why I say Violin is the best school district in New Jersey. Thank you to all the presenters that came before us and presented. The information was very useful, it was very informative, and thank you for that. Thank you for the speakers that spoke today from the public. Always a good thing to have the public let us know their concerns so that we know what's going on within the, in the city. I'd like to say congratulations to the two new board members that we have coming on in January, Mr. Shane Harris and Ms. Donna Perez. I look forward to working with you both. I'd like to say thank you to Inez Acosta and Eugene Medio for their service to this Board. Inez, I got to meet her when I, when I first came on the Board, and it was, she's always been a kind, gentle person to me. We've always, always never, always, we never always agreed on everything, but that never led, she never allowed that to change how she treated me always, and I am grateful for that. Mr. Eugene Medio, I met him really for the first time when he came on last year, and say what you say about Eugene, but he's a man of wisdom, a man that loves this school district, and I am forever grateful for Mr. Eugene Medio for instilling his wisdom, his fire, everything that he brings to the table, I'm appreciative, and I learned a lot from Eugene, and I will continue to learn from Mr. Medio. So thank you, thank you, Mr. Medio. I had the honor of participating this year in the homecoming parade and also the game, watching the game. That's always a fun event. Took my boys with me, and we walked the avenue with the rest of the participants. It's always a great time. Thanksgiving is coming up. I'd like to wish everyone a happy and blessed Thanksgiving. This time of year is always important to reflect and remember the things that we're thankful for, obviously, but those that are no longer with us, that we wish were with us, those empty seats at the table, those are, are those that we loved and we've lost. And it's always a hard time for myself and my family, but it's a blessed time as well because we are truly blessed. And to the rest of the city, to the rest of the parents and guardians of the children of Violin Public Schools, and to all the families, I wish you a happy Thanksgiving, a blessed Thanksgiving, and can't wait for the rest of the school year. Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you to our flag saluters from Veterans Memorial School. Gratitude to our veterans for their service to our nation, and also to our students, their families, and the employees of Violin Public Schools. Thank you to Mr. Shifalaleo and a great presentation and our athletes for joining us tonight so we could applaud their successes in person. The more students we have here, the better I like it. Good health and great experiences to our 10 retiring employees. I know I may sound like a broken record, but their service amounts to 170 years. Just another reminder of our, of the absolute necessity to find the best staff members available for every open position. Yes, Jeff, I'm speaking to you. Happy to report that Gia Misori, my successor on the district administrative team, was a winner in the 2024 School Communications Award Contest. Ms. Misori and VPS received an award of excellence in the photography category. Her job here is officially called Public Information Officer for the district, and she manages the communications channels, including social media, website content, is well seeing, overseeing district photography and media relations. In addition to keeping the community informed and engaged, she also serves as the district's grant grader. In the remaining 45 minutes a day, she takes a nap. Well done, Gia. It was an honor and privilege to speak on behalf of my colleagues and the courtesy of Mrs. Cottis Patti at the November 4th ceremony that Ms. Quinn discussed naming the VHS South Building for First Lieutenant Charles Chiki Aselta. I was not a student at the same time. He was, but I knew much about him, a fifth-generation Violin resident and a, someone who gave the ultimate, paid the ultimate price in Vietnam. When I was researching, I saw that his, his service included actively participating in more than 25 aerial missions over hostile territory in a light unarmed aircraft, flying low and slow, so he could direct artillery fire. And he was called a forward observer, and what that meant was that he was trying to find a way to deliver artillery fire to protect our troops without unnecessarily killing civilians. They call it danger close in military terms. All I know is that his service saved many lives, and it took incredible amount of courage. 20 missions was considered a great deal, and he, he was in 25. So naming that building for him was certainly well, you know, well-deserved. Finally, congratulations, Mr. Silva, returning to the Board, and the two new members, Mr. Harris and Ms. Perez. Thank you to Ms. Acosta for her service. She did not seek reelection. Mr. Medio, a guy I knew since 1969, and I'd say we fought about half the time and laughed about half the time, but lately, we were starting to agree more, and I don't know if that was a good thing or not, but I know I'll miss our conversations, and maybe they'll, maybe they'll continue because he's likely to come back, so I didn't take any of his signs and throw them away. Anyway, we thank them for their service and we wish them well, and happy Thanksgiving.
Mr. Silva?
Yes, thank you. Like to say thank you to the flag saluters from Sergeant Dominic Pillar and Veterans Memorial. Thank you to the veterans that we honor today that work in our district and other veterans out there, thank you for your service. Mr. Schiff, thank you very much for this beautiful display of our athletes, the great athletes we have in this district, and also the coaches that devoted their times, the volunteers, everyone included, that made this season successful. Ms. Rudolph, thank you for the data that you shared with us. Gia, congratulations on your award. Ms. Giuliani, thank you for sharing what's going on at VHS. Like to congratulate our newcomers on the Board, January, Mr. Harris and Ms. Perez, Ms. Inez Acosta, thank you for your service to the district. Mr. Medio, truly gonna miss you, but I'm sure we'll be talking. I've learned a lot from him. I grew up in the same neighborhood as his kids, played football together, so he's been a great mentor to me throughout my journey as a Board member, and I am looking forward to another three years, and congratulations to myself, too. Like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and everyone be blessed. Thank you.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Bono?
I'll be short and sweet because I used my time earlier. Thank you again for allowing me the opportunity. I just wanted to piggyback off of what my other Board members have said. I agree with everything they said, and not this past Monday, but the Monday before was a beautiful day for the city of Violin and Violin Public Schools. I attended two events that day. It was a busy morning. I first went to my old middle school, Memorial School, and what an honor and privilege it was to be a part of that event, just to be there and witness what our students and school provided for our local veterans. I attended Memorial back in middle school, and I remembered it being a great, great place, great learning environment for my, myself. But a shout-out to everyone involved in putting that together, from the choir, the band, for a fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth grade band, they were absolutely phenomenal. So the arts over at Memorial, you know, great job, keep up the great work. The students were phenomenal, well-behaved. You were greeted as soon as you walked in the door, and the whole event was spectacular. brought tears to my eyes. My father's a Vietnam vet, and it just, it was, it was an awesome experience. I followed that by going to the Chiki Aselta renaming of Von High School. And just a shout-out again to all the hands that were involved and to the Aselta family. What an honor, and just the news tonight, the first Vietnam veteran to be, for his name to be displayed on a school building in the state of New Jersey. What an honor and privilege to be a part of it, so, thank you. And happy Thanksgiving to all the Violin Public Schools employees and administration. Be safe.
Mr. Holmes?
I'd like to congratulate all of our students, coaches, teachers, staff, who are recognized this evening on a great season. Lastly, I just want to congratulate Mr. Silva on your reelection. Glad to have you back on the Board. I also want to give my heartfelt thanks to the citizens of Violin for considering and electing Mr. Harris and Ms. Perez to the Board. These two individuals worked very hard this election season, and they're in it for the right reasons, so definitely want to congratulate them, and I look forward to working with both of you. Ms. Acosta will hopefully be back before the end of her term, so I'll recognize her at that time. Thank you, have a great night, and happy Thanksgiving.
Mr. Yano?
Yes, we have so many items to celebrate, so I'll just name a few because many, much has been said already this evening, and I also just want
has been said already this evening, and I also just want to make sure I am recognizing Gia Missori for her award of excellence in photography. I know it's been mentioned already, but she shines like a star every day, working so hard behind the scenes that we, we don't always have a moment or opportunity to recognize her efforts. Well done, Gia, you are amazing. We also want to just be very specific in our support for all of the celebrations that we've conducted with our community, the naming of our schools, the work that we did recognizing Veterans at Memorial School. Just incredible when our school leaders connect with the community and we bring in our families together to celebrate the amazing children that we educate every day. This evening was a celebration of that in a way, where we had our student athletes here celebrating their accomplishments, and our coaches. Coach Schiff has been doing an amazing job. But on top of that, you also got to see a lot of data, and we're going to unpack it further for you, but just want to point out that we have the highest graduation rate in Vineland, in Vineland's history right now since 2012. Right? So, we, you know, also felt in '22, it was one of the lowest rates, and that was the first year that I arrived. After COVID, there was a lot of challenges. In three years, we've now exceeded that rate, and that's a testament to the work of our cabinet, our school leaders at the high school, our middle school principals, and our elementary school principals, because it takes a village, a community, parents, and everyone working together, and this board supporting the programs. We continue to innovate by, again, approving my goals this evening, which include work on restructuring, revising, and reimagining how we educate our ninth graders at Von High School by creating a ninth grade academy, and then also bringing in some additional programming, curriculum, courses, and supports for our students. So, we are at a very amazing time in our school district because we have the support of this board to reimagine that experience and then bring that level of energy down to our middle schools and continue to work with our elementary schools as we push our students to do amazing, amazing, amazing things in their classroom to achieve new levels of instruction and achievement. I also want to make sure that, earlier, Ms. Sabrana spoke about the van and the work that's gone into the van, and he celebrated a group of individuals and their work. But I also want to recognize a few other individuals who were not mentioned, because when I arrived in the district, the van was, there was no funding for the van. It had been eliminated from the budget, it was not going to be a reality. Board President Scott English came and had a conversation and said, "This is something that would be really great for our school district, let's find a way." At that time, Mr. Mustarel was the assistant BA, and he was asked to go dive into the books and look for funding for a significant purchase of a vehicle. So, thank you, Mr. Mustarel, for doing that work, and thank you to Mr. English, because he, it really came from him bringing it to my attention and our work together to make it a reality because the funding was not there. It took a long time because of COVID to get the vehicle in the district, and Ms. Sabrana all along the way was pushing us to make sure that that vehicle arrived, and now it's a reality, and you got to see some amazing photos. And if you follow me on Instagram, you've gotten to see some of those opportunities where the van was in action. Awesome work. And thank you to Doug Diola, Doug's up in the booth up there, he's waving his hand at us, the work that he's doing with our students on the van, and Rob Garcia as well, and Gia again, too, because that takes a team to make that happen. And that's it for me.
I'd like to echo everything that my fellow board members have spoken this evening, but I do have to say, congratulations to all of our students who were here tonight, from our safety patrol to all of our student athletes. You can see what a testament is to our Vineland School District of how great our students are. To our veterans in our, on our staff, and to the veterans across Vineland and our country, thank you so much for your service and duty to our country and to us. The Chiki Assalta event, the naming of the school, was phenomenal, and I have to thank Debbie Quinn, principal, and her staff, and those who helped her for a wonderful, wonderful testament to his life. I have rode by that several times now, and it's just, you know, kind of amazing to see that. Congratulations to Mr. Silva, welcome back. Congratulations to Mr. Harris, Ms. Perez, we're looking forward to working with you. Everything you've heard, don't believe, but then again, it's probably true with what we do with the board. We're all here to help you, and I think you've already gotten a text with all of our phone numbers on it, so please reach out if you have any questions. Good luck to our football team on Thanksgiving, and I'm wishing everyone a very happy and a blessed Thanksgiving and a safe weekend. Thank you to all of our staff, congratulations to Gia, and for that, have a good night. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second. All favor.